Call this meeting of the City Council, special meeting, March 20, 2025, at 5:30 to order. If you guys please take a moment of silence for our invocation. Thank you. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Clerk?
Yes, the following is the procedure for public participation. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign-up cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. And finally, all sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Attorney, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. We have one agenda item this evening. It's to engage Roper, Townsend, and Stuffin, PA, to provide legal services and authorize the City Manager or City Attorney to execute the engagement letter.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, are there any cards?
Would you like me to introduce anything on the item?
Did you want to read the thing?
I just wanted to give the Counsel and the public an explanation of maybe a little more why we're here. That may help with the cards. The City of Titusville serves on March 10, 2025, with two subpoenaed duces Tecums without deposition. One, the City Titusville Police Department, requesting production of documents in regards to a matter of State of Florida versus Vicky Conklin in the County Court. Upon receipt of the subpoenas, which was last Monday, the City began processing and gathering and working with the clerk to try and gather all the documents in order to comply with the subpoena. Again, this is subpoena out of the court, and we have 20 days to comply. It's very, you have the subpoenas in front of you, and they're fairly extensive, fairly broad in what they cover. And Chelsea could speak more to this. She's worked with clerk, but when we start to input the data, thousands of hits are coming back. And one of the issues we had is how do we gather all that information and review that information and look at any necessary redactions, look for responsiveness in those matters and try to comply with the timeline set by the subpoena? We did reach out to the attorney and ask, is there some way we could modify the scope, give an extension of time? Because our whole goal here is compliance. Because if you do not comply in the 20 days, you're facing contempt of court. So it's very important that, first of all, you do comply. So in going through that process, two things we noticed is going to be, in my opinion, very difficult, if not impossible, to be able to gather all the information within that 20 days. Given that, if you're going to object for any reason, if you can't comply within those 20 days, you have to object within 10 days so that we could get in front of the court and say, is there any way we can pare this down, get more time, to protect the city's rights? So I know the City did file an objection on that basis because we want to comply, but we don't want to be in contempt of court. So we want to make sure that we can get all the documents to be responsive in a timely manner. But given the breadth of the request and the clerk, it's almost, it's a Herculean task. So we've done that. The reason for the request for outside counsel is because this is a subpoena duces Tecum in the criminal courts, which is a little bit different of a flavor. It's a different subject matter expertise, which we do not exercise as City Attorneys. That's something that someone would want to understand. First of all, which documents are responsive, which documents, what we need to do with regard to privilege or confidentiality or overall responsiveness. For instance, you know, there's a request in here for every communication correspondence text from every single City employee, City officials, there's 500 employees. It's just a lot of work to gather that information. So in the best interest of the City, we thought it was appropriate to engage someone because we think if you engage counsel who does understand the nuances of dealing with the subpoena and the discovery request, it's going to provide a more efficient response and hopefully a better response for the court. That's, that was our goal. And to come in compliance with the subpoena.
Thank you, City Attorney. Member Nelson?
Richard, do we have an idea of how many hours we're going to have in this? Or an estimate? Rough guess? Not going to hold you to it, just a rough guess.
Hours for compliant or?
Right.
Or?
Well, compliance plus the appearing at the hearing.
Of course, you'll have a couple hours to engage in filing paperwork in preparation for a hearing and having hearing to ask the judge, you know, narrow the scope or not? Or is there additional time so we can come in compliance and look at some of those issues? Chelsea could, is the one who's been working on this. She could speak to you with the clerk maybe more on the time of trying to come in compliance. It's merely a guess at this point. But I think there's been thousands of hits so far trying to get the documents, and that was the first step.
That's correct. In working with the City Clerk's Office, the Records Custodian has tools using our T department to gather all of the City issued emails and sort through them for the keyword hits as they related to the subpoena. And the initial response for just the names of three individuals named in the subpoena is 17,700-plus emails that will then need to be searched by the Records Custodian and their department to identify for any potential confidential material or exempt material pursuant to Florida statute section or Chapter 119, Florida's public records law, that determines what is confidential and protected information. In addition, there may be some attorney-client privileged information or attorney-work product that may come as a result of that very generic search that IT produces back to the Records Custodian. And the City doesn't know how many conflicts may appear in each of those 17,000 emails. So it's hard to estimate exactly how long it will take. But based on the first few hundred having been sorted through by our Records Custodian, she estimated about 60 hours just to sort through those emails to determine what would be responsive to the records request. And that is separate from all of additional records that may be identified beyond the scope of emails. So that would include things like work files that are not contained within your emails and any other types of files that would need to be responsive to the request. So the City Records Department is prepared to go through and do that work. But given the very strict timeline of production being that the subpoena demanded results by the end of March, and given the staff had somewhat of a short staff this week, the Records Custodian had pre-arranged time off, and so they were looking for assistance on an extension. And when I reached out to Attorney Robinson, who had demanded the response of the subpoena, he was not willing to provide an extension in time, nor was he willing to reduce the scope by any parameters or the time range from August 29 through March 10. So the reason that the volume is so high, I think, is because six months and 10 days is a long period of time to search through all City staff emails and their work materials in order to sort through that volume of materials. We would like additional time.
Chelsea, Michael Roper. How did we come up with him and what is his litigation experience?
Yeah, the Roper Law Firm is currently Defense Counsel for the City as well as the County and others. They've been doing that work for more than 20 years. Rather large firm. They do have staff from the State Attorney's Office who understand their subpoena process and criminal law. And that was important when we reached out to them because, again, we want to make sure, it's always the first goal is compliance with the subpoena.
Right.
And to make sure that as we're going through the records, they're responsive and protect the City's interest in making sure we are responsive and in compliance. And we thought they could do that with the court and go through that process with defense attorneys. Something that we, is out of our wheelhouse. We typically do not do.
Okay, so the idea would be that the clerks, if the court does not narrow the scope of the subpoena, then the clerks would go through it. And then, I'm assuming, you guys would go through it and they give it Mike Roper?
What he'll do is, right, if retained firm, he will help the clerk go through the process of helping them be responsive.
Yeah.
How can we search better? What's within those guidelines? Because the goal, of course, against subpoenas is to comply with the subpoena. That's the whole purpose.
Okay.
In a timely fashion because time is of the essence. And especially, like I said, when you have that 20-day deadline and you don't comply, you're in contempt. So there wasn't any other option at this point.
Okay.
But to request, you know, file an objection in the sense that we need to either narrow the scope, look at the time, is there a way we can get the documents that are necessary for that proceeding to them?
Okay. It did seem awfully broad, the subpoena, but thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Mascosso?
Yes, thank you. So we just received the legal service agreement. I think I would have appreciated to receive it a bit earlier because I'm seeing the price per hour, things like that, and then I would have had time to go through. I think it is important that the public, if we are going to vote on spending tax dollars, the public knows exactly why. So could you explain the situation that led to a subpoena, kind of the backstory, to why we have this special meeting, what we're talking about here?
I can't speak as to why we received a subpoena, but we received a subpoena for records. I, like I said, that was 10 days ago. And I don't know what you're asking me. I'm not involved in the other proceedings. I don't know why we received it other than they felt it was important in that case to obtain these records.
Do you know anything about the case?
No, I do not.
You don't know anything about this case?
I know what the case is.
Okay.
But I haven't read the file. I didn't.
I just feel it's important for the public to know why we would use tax dollars on this. As for the, it's, to me, it sounds like the, we're not, this is the State of Florida versus Vicky Conklin. This hasn't, there's no lawsuit against the City of Titusville, right?
That's correct.
And so.
Not that I'm aware of.
In my opinion, it looks like we're just providing records. And we, and Chelsea, I know you've been working really hard, and it sounds like we need additional staff to help with these records. I'm not sure. But I'm not sure we're at the point that we need to be spending taxpayer dollars to hire an outside attorney. And I have one more question. I don't know. I just got this on my desk, but this has a little sticky note, which probably was not supposed to be there. And it says, phone numbers to be searched, which emails to be searched. BCSO asked them, SAO asked them, SO2 asked them, Andrew can't search his.
Sure. That sounds like.
What does that can't search his mean? Yeah.
It was on my desk.
Right, that's one of the other requests. I, from what you're saying, it sounds like with regard to, there was a request for phone logs, and we weren't sure how to.
I'd like to have that back if possible. Thank you.
It was phone logs. And how do we? And I'll let Chelsea speak to that because that's her notes, but I think that was in relation to the phone logs and how to do that.
The note that I wrote, this is my note, and I'll give it back to you as soon as I'm done responding to your question. The subpoena for confirmation, for everyone listening to any confusion you may have, says that the City is demanded to respond to copies of a whole list of things, including phone logs about Vicky Conklin created, and then it continues, phone logs about Earl Johnson, phone logs about Andrew Connors. And then it goes on, in the subpoena, to talk about copies of communications between BCSO. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find.
Sorry, I'm specifically asking about the sticky note that's on top.
Right, and I was making notes from the subpoena into my sticky note as far as how we would produce those results. And so I was making notes which, and asking for the phone numbers to be searched for the phone log. I was asking which emails to be searched for these things listed in the subpoena. To ask for BCSO, to ask them for those responses. To ask the State Attorney's Office, ask them for what those are. And for the Supervisor of Elections to ask them what they are. And when it says Andrew, and I wrote can't search his, I can't search his personal email. That's what that note means. And so I wanted to explain what my notes were that weren't meant to be shared with you tonight, and I apologize for this confusion. I don't know how it ended up on your desk. But I hope that's a thorough explanation for you.
Yes, thank you.
Member Nelson?
I do want to address this because if we have 60 hours of staff time right now, we're going to spend a lot more. So the question is, do we want a Defense Counsel to look at it, somebody who has done criminal law, and say, this is overbroad, these are the things you should ask for? Or do we want to spend money giving them everything? And I will say, as an attorney, $250 is pretty cheap. I mean, I know it sounds like a lot. Most of my friends who are paying, charging $300 and up, so. The question is, one, I don't think that staff can comply within 20 days, which means we're in contempt of court, and that's not a good place to be. Or we try to either get an extension or narrow it down. So I think that's the issue.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Mascosso?
Can I ask how much funding is available? And it says accounts. I can read the numbers that's designated for the professional legal services.
That would be my, I have an account for outside legal counsel. My office has always had an account for that. And I might have to defer to Amanda, but it's probably, and this for various things, whether we talk to Union Counsel with HR, and they'll bill me for that. We have contracts with them. But I utilize that. So I was going to utilize that account for this purpose. And there's, there's maybe $40,000 in there. I usually don't use it all. But it would come out of those funds that are already set aside for outside counsel.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm still not understanding for the subpoena. Can you maybe even simplify it, what the attorney, so I can understand what the attorney is coming in to do? So day-to-day, the attorney comes in. Are they sitting down with the clerk of court, are they sitting down with records and going one by one for the records? Or what exactly is happening?
Right. What I anticipate is there would be, I'm guessing, a hearing with the judge to look at the subpoena and look at what we need to produce in timely and advise everybody, this is what you need to do, and maybe define it. Because as said in here, the text, and it goes over time, every text. Well, some of those are personal, and we don't maintain personal. We maintain public records. So one of the questions might be at the court is, can you help narrow that down knowing that the City maintains public records and we could get some better description of what that definition is? He, so one is to go to the hearing, talk to the judge, and help us understand what's appropriate in that proceeding, in that court, for the subpoena and for the City to respond and respond appropriately. Then it would also be, in my opinion, to assist the clerk, once that decision is made, in her complying with that court order. It may say, are these records responsive to the court order? And the assistance might be at that point, yes, and how can we produce them?
So it's more than just a records request. It's to represent us before the judge?
On the subpoenas, I tried too narrow to look at getting us either a time extension if necessary. Is there a way to scale it down and maneuver in those court proceedings to do that and do it timely? And to assist the clerk in doing compliance?
Those are things that you don't feel capable to do?
That's correct. Not in that court. That's correct.
Not in that court. And I was just looking at Mr. Roper and his experience bodily injury, civil rights, products liability, employment, commercial trucking, insurance coverage, public entity, construction defect. I don't see criminal, this is a criminal case. However, the subpoena, I'm not sure where his expertise fits in there.
It's his firm, Cindy Townsend, and Jamie McManus from the State Attorney's Office in the firm, in my opinion, will be working on that. So he'd be signing an engagement letter for the firm, and they would have staff with that expertise involved.
And I know you said 250 isn't a lot, but if you've ever hired an attorney, it adds up. And so it might be 250 per hour, but once you get into emails, it goes up. And so this is, these are taxpayer dollars. And so I am very wary. I think we need to be extra careful on this.
Member Mascosso, are you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Didn't want to cut you off. Member Stokoe?
Yes, just a few clarifying questions. When we've received subpoenas in the past, do you or do we typically ask them to narrow the scope if what they're asking is too broad? Is that a comment?
We've received, typically the subpoena, we receive, it's a court proceeding, a civil. Maybe it's a building issue, and they want building permits, they want inspections. And we forward that to staff. Then we have to do redactions. Yes, we can look at that because that's in civil court. And that's rare. We get subpoenas typically. It's other requests. But yes, there are times when we ask someone whether or not they went to, and typically if it's a rather large request. You know, one time we had a request for every email in the fire department for the last 20 years. You just can't do that. It'd be $100,000, you know. So we say, look, if you could give us a time, a subject matter, the clerk then could then scope those words and really provide those records that they're really looking for. Because they may not know to do that. So the clerk does assist and say, is there some way we could narrow the scope that would help you achieve what you want?
Do they typically?
And reasonably.
Do they typically work on narrowing the scope or? Okay. And to clarify, we have asked this attorney to see if they could narrow the scope?
We, I did. I think Chelsea spoke with them. And understand if, you know, if they need records for their case and that's what they want. But yeah, we did reach out, but we were not.
We did already ask to narrow it?
Yeah, but we were unsuccessful in trying to say how that would be narrowed or getting a time extension. And so.
Okay, so we didn't.
Given that, now, maybe we can still do that. It's still early. We've only had this for, it's been 10 days.
Yeah, but we're also, I think.
We only had 10 days to respond.
That's what I was going to say.
And that was the trick of keeping, protecting the city's rights. And I thought, you know, this firm and the criminal court, understanding what is more likely to be relevant, what's acceptable, what's appropriate, could work with this firm, maybe in scaling it down and figuring out what they really need. And it might work to everybody's best interest. But our goal, again, is compliance. That's in an efficient manner as best we can.
Okay, but to clarify, we have asked for an extension, and we did ask to potentially narrow, and we were told no on both?
I'll have to defer to Chelsea. She's working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, we originally reached out to Mr. Robinson by phone, and he requested that everything be put in writing. So I sent him a detailed email asking for the scope to be narrowed, the dates of the timeframe within the subpoena to be narrowed and/or for an extension of time for our response. And we received a no on all accounts.
Okay.
Not that, I don't think, no that they weren't willing to continue to try to work on it. But at that point, it was, I don't think they had a way to do it at that point.
No, but that helps, I think, in making a decision, I think, tonight. And then my last question is, I know we've received subpoenas before. Have we ever received any subpoenas for a criminal case?
I have not. I.
Either.
Neither have I.
Okay, all right.
I mean, not, not that I recall the clerk received one, but not like this. I haven't dealt with it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Member Mascosso?
I think Vice Mayor Cole was first.
No, you were.
No? Okay. So I do have a question. As I understand, the State Attorney did not object to the subpoena per the rules. Is that correct?
That'd be my understanding because when you do a third-party subpoena of this nature, like in a civil, in that arena, you first send it to the other party and see if they have objections, and they have so many days to object. And if they don't object, then you forward it. And it got forwarded, so I can only assume there was no objection.
So I have it here. Maybe you can help explain it to me or Joe Lynn. It says, "Come now, the defendant, Vicky Joyce Conklin, by and through the undersigned attorney and files a certificate that no timely objections have been received from any party to the notice of intent to serve subpoenas to the City, to Titusville Police Department and the City of Titusville." What does the no timely objections mean?
Correct. That would be when you send it to a party, as we said before, in this case, they send it to the State Attorney's Office. They have, under the rules, I have a period of time to object. And if there's no objection, then they forward it to us. That's all I was saying before. So they forwarded it to us, saying they received no timely objection.
So the State Attorney is saying, I'm sorry.
He is saying the State Attorney did not object.
So they are okay with the timeframe that has been given?
No, they're not. I actually.
I don't know.
Sorry, I'm just trying to understand this.
I contacted Mr. Eastman, the Assistant State Attorney, who is listed on this case after we received the subpoena. I asked him to call me. I sent him a copy of the subpoena package that we received. And he did call me pretty quickly and let me know that he did not actually see, receive, look at the subpoena prior to the notice of no objection being filed by the court. He expressed some frustrations with the State of Florida's e-filing system, which is the process that you file documents through in the State of Florida. And it would have been provided by Mr. Robinson through the e-portal. That's the required process. But Mr. Eastman said that he would have been willing to sign an affidavit regarding that he had not seen a copy of the subpoena. that he had not seen a copy of the subpoena. However, I, I do not know if he's taken any independent action outside of our conversation. And.
Well, right, to answer your question, there was no objections filed that I'm aware of. That's why we are working on this, right. So we received it and we're working on it.
Okay. I don't know if there's an objection that we can file with the court on this matter, but the rules specifically stay, say that all parties are required to receive the, a copy of the proposed subpoena before they are served on any non-parties. And of course, the city is a non-party, so we did not receive a notice prior to getting the subpoena that we could have objected to. And I don't know if there's any rules or processes out there that speak to whether or not third parties should receive notice prior to receiving that subpoena. But that is a procedural thing that we would like to consult with our additional counsel that may be more proficient in that area of law.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Again, the goal is compliance and that's why we're already working on it.
Thank you, Member Moscoso and Assistant City Attorney Chelsea. Vice Mayor Cole.
I understand what you're referring to, Member Moscoso, about the funds that are being expended. But I also think that if you recognize that you don't have the expertise in a certain area, in other words, you wouldn't go to an orthopedic surgeon if you had a heart problem. So lawyers specialize in various things. The one thing we don't want to happen is to be charged with contempt of court. So I think if we're airing, we're going to air on the positive side and try to get this done as timely as we can with the help, the outside counsel help that we can. I think it would be money well spent and I'm sure we're going to watch to make sure we don't overspend our funds. But I really feel strongly that if we don't have the expertise in-house, we need to proceed and bring in an expert to help us with this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Moscoso.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I, I just feel like it's, in my opinion, it's premature, once we get to that point, perhaps. But I, I'm just not saying it, if I can be honest. I mean, if, if we're going to use the medical analogy, we're just asking for someone's medical records at this point.
Member Nelson.
Okay, I'm going to disagree, Meg. Because when you have 20 days to comply and we've already eaten up 10 days, you're on a time clock. And so at this point, we need to, you know, hopefully he'll act, we'll be able to resolve it. That would be my hope. Peacefully, quietly, I will say this particular law firm is known for being very assertive, borderline aggressive. I like them, they're friends, but I also recognize that, and I think we need to go ahead and act. I don't think we have a choice unless you want to be fined by a judge for however much for being in contempt of court.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Moscoso.
Yeah, I think we just, I, what I'm struggling with is the reason that we're in this situation. If I can be honest, it's not, it's not for a good reason. We're all here because there were some nasty things done during an election and, and things that I feel are not defensible. And if the city has played a part in any of that, I think that needs to be revealed. And so, yes, I want the city to be legally protected. However, what I saw was not good. What I saw when Mayor Connors put up signs of his opponent was not good. What I saw the chief of police put out a video and because of state statute had to take it out was not good. So I am all for these records being presented. And I think, Mr. Broom, I talked to you about this and I asked you, when that video came out from Chief Lau, what were the repercussions? Why did it get taken down? What did you do about it? Now, that information is now going to be sent to this attorney. How do we, how do we defend this? Do we spend more taxpayer dollars or should we have handled this internally? So there, for me, it is kind of a background to it of, of the frustration. Member Stokel, you were out there, you saw the signs, you know, this is, we can just go in circles around this. But this is, this is more than just producing records.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to get to, is there any cards on the city clerk?
Yes, sir, there are four cards.
All right. Can you call the first one?
Kathleen O'Rourke. Let's get to go first.
Hello. Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident. And I will say, there's been a number of cases since I've been resident here where citizens have to pay a lot of money to get attorneys and it's very stressful. And no one really worries about that so much, even when the case is occurring because of what happened within the city. And we have two attorneys already on staff and you have, a fair number of people can find records. I also believe finding records is not as complex as it is trying to be very careful of what you give out from those records. So perhaps maybe we could save some money and just give what we should give. I once had a court case and a lawyer came in, you know, and we had this agreement, they would pay, you know, take 30% and they gave me this stack this high and said, look how much work we did. You know, that sounds like this to me. Look how much we have, we need this. But maybe we don't and as a resident, I really object to doing that. Maybe the mayor would like to donate his salary to this cause. That would be a use.
Thank you. City clerk?
Elizabeth Parker.
What I'm hearing is, is really disappointing to me. The idea that the city needs to retain a criminal attorney to respond to a simple subpoena for public records, which is no different than a FOIA request, is insane. The taxpayers in the city have to be extraordinarily careful with their money. What they earn, they have to portion to pay for taxes on their water, their sewer, their homes, the things that they buy in the city, including their gasoline. All of these monies are ceded to the city and the city is expected to be a responsible custodian. The city does not need a criminal attorney. The city has two attorneys on staff who are quite competent if there's a need to write to the judge and say, Judge, we need a little more time here. With regard to the subpoena itself, it's for public records. The city knows where its records are. The city's already begun to compile its records. And certainly, the city is quite capable of reading through the records and determining which ones are responsive. A subpoena is not a difficult piece of paper. It's very clear in what it's asking. The problem with this is the city council may be concerned about what it discloses with regard to council members themselves or city staff or city employees. But I agree with Member Moscoso and we should not be circling the wagons to cover our behinds. We should be disclosing the facts and let the facts fall where they will. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Tony Shifalo.
We all know why we're here. We know what the subpoena is all about, what the records they want. I could go into that, but I won't because I'm going to stick to the issue at hand, should we hire outside counsel or not? As treasurer of Speak Up Titusville, I know the expense involved with outside counsel in a case that ultimately was of no legal consequence. Because after all, citizens are allowed, under state statute, to sue any municipality for malfeasance. And we all know the malfeasance of continual sewage spills and denials of that. So look at all that wasted taxpayer money there. $169,000 to outside counsel. I say, just answer the subpoenas. Give them all the information between the dates they want and let them pay their attorney to sort it out. And permit Mr. Broom to earn his $207,147.20 salary for last year by releasing public documents to their attorney. Thank you for letting me speak tonight at this special meeting. Wonder what this is costing us? Hmm.
Thank you. City clerk?
Yes, last card, Trenton Mansfield.
Every time I come up here, I talk about money. I feel like campaign games got, the, the snowball just got really big. And I feel like, I heard you, Mayor Connors, talk about how you were a fiscal conservative. Well, the campaign games got too big, right? And now the city's having to pay for it. City's having to pay for it. We've raised taxes over the past eight years, seven times out of the eight years, maybe it's nine years, eight times out of the nine years, I've lost track. And you tell me, you told me during the campaign season that we're going to, we're going to lower the budget. And now we got all these constitutional amendments that are coming up to bat. What's the city going to do? Like, we can only raise it, well, we can raise as much as we want, it's, it's not really a big thing. But your gains are costing the city money, at the bottom line. You can look at me all smirky all you want to, it doesn't bother me one little bit, but your gains are costing the city money. And this is over two misdemeanors, over $750 petty theft and under. That's what it's over. How much is it going to cost the city? How much? Thousand, 5,000, 10,000, 20,000? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, any other cards?
I don't think we have any other cards.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other kind of motion from council? Anybody want to make a motion?
We have a citizen who wants to speak.
On the agenda item?
No.
All right, well, we're speaking on the agenda item. Can you please give us a, we'll get to public comment in a little bit. Member Nelson.
I, for one, think it's prudent to engage Roper Townsend and Southman to provide legal service, services and authorize the city manager or city attorney to execute the engagement letter. Either way, it sounds like we cannot comply with the subpoena in time. So we either need to appear before the court and ask for an extension. And while we're doing it, we might as well ask that it, the subpoena be narrowed. It isn't going to get rid of public records, but we do need it a little more narrow. So that would be my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further council discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, can you call a roll call vote, please?
May I clarify, the motion is to approve as recommended.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Member Moscoso?
No.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Abstain.
Sir, I couldn't understand.
I said abstain.
If you're going to abstain, you need to say why. And you would need to fill out the paperwork.
Yep, I will fill out the paperwork afterwards. I'm a victim in this case and I feel that my judgment should not be compromised. Well, let's be very clear, I'm not the one on trial, Ms. Conklin is.
If, right, because if you're going to abstain, is it, you can abstain either because there's conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest?
Yeah, just because of an appearance. So I'm going to abstain.
And you would need to fill out the paperwork.
I will fill out the paperwork. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. City manager.
Petitions and requests?
Okay. Petitions and requests.
Here we go again. When are you guys going to start acting like elected officials and adults? You spend money like it's, definitely not as like as yours, but you already had a case where 82% of the people voted for clean water and you guys didn't like it. So you went to court two times. And then you turn around and want to sue the public with the public's money. We don't agree with that. Y'all want to go against it? Come up with the total cost and pay for it yourself or drop it. But we can't keep going down this road just saying we're going to do this and do that with the taxpayers' money. Because it's ugly. That election was ugly and some of you know it. But it's all going to come out in the wash. So it's time that this city council step up, take control of the city like it's supposed to. You're going to get a new county manager. You're going to hire him. Act like he works for you and not you working for him. You need to get a new police chief. Must happen. The people are not going to be so happy until John Lau is no longer the police chief of the City of Titusville. And I'm going to say it, corruption, crooked, nasty, untrained, and everything, all of the above. If you look on the internet and pull up Titusville, it doesn't even sound good if you're trying to move a company here and you say how bad the crime is. And if it's not in your area, I guess you don't care. But it still reflects on everybody in the city. You need to train the police officers, need to teach them how to relate to people. This is not us against them and them against us. We ain't going to get anywhere that way. It doesn't take much to speak, roll the window down and wave at somebody. Unfortunately, it's not like that everywhere because it'll be a police state. But it's time for this, this city council to be a city council.
Thank you, sir.
That was a good introduction for what I wanted to ask about Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, still Titusville resident. I have a few questions I wanted to ask Scott Larisse, but it's my understanding that I cannot ask him directly, but that I need one of the board members to ask the questions for me. And Andrew, since you're currently occupying the mayor's seat, I'm requesting that you would ask these questions. First, I would like to know when Chief Lau's contract was last renewed in 2024?
I'm going to give you your three minutes and then we can ask questions if we choose to.
I'm sorry, what do you mean? You're going to get, why don't you ask the question? Are you afraid to ask the question? It's not that complicated. Wow, you are a great mayor, aren't you?
Thank you.
I mean, look at that skill. All right, then I'll just list all the questions I have and we'll see where they go. Because I understand, at least from my reading, that Chief Lau's contract was renewed in the fall, either October or November. The next question, is that accurate? And, you know, he's a great speaker, too. Okay. I would say, please ask Scott why he chose to renew this contract early, well before it was due. Did he ask anybody else for input into this plan before he renewed the contract? And has anybody else gotten a raise since Mr. Scott noticed he was retiring, in quotes? This new contract is very expensive and it doesn't seem appropriate that a lame, dark city manager make these types of decisions. Furthermore, it'd be much more appropriate to wait until the results of the current investigation that you referred to are completed before a decision is made about removing, renewing this contract. I would like to add. I would like to ask the board to negate this contract until a more appropriate time. And I really would appreciate it if you would be willing to answer questions, but obviously you're not brave enough to do that. You're too afraid when people ask you things. These are important questions. The citizens want to know this. And you just sit there with this blank look on your eye. So I guess that's it because no one is going to ask those questions.
Thank you very much. Member Nelson?
I can tell you this, that in terms of salary for a police chief, he is not getting any benefits. His salary is lower than what other police chiefs are making. And that was his decision to accept the contract.
Please, this is not a back and forth.
I'm responding. When someone talks to me, I respond. I know you don't.
Please, no, we're not getting back into the back and forth.
I appreciate that very much.
And I have no problem talking with you. I've known the chief for 30 years. I knew the last two police chiefs that were here, last three. Ew. Okay, so I'm old. I've known the last three or four police chiefs here. I have no problem in talking with you after.
Okay, we could do that. And as you know, my father was a police officer, my uncle was a police officer. I am not anti-police.
No.
But this process is what I'm really objecting to, is the way this man who's leaving just makes a decision to do this with essentially no input from anybody and politically very inappropriate.
Thank you very much for your time. Seeing no further public comment, are you coming up?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
My name is Michael Dwyer. Live on Merritt Street, Merritt Drive. I have a major problem with the city right now. They are not acting at all on that Apollo Gardens project. It's a super bad idea. It's a super bad project. The Board of Adjustments gave us no chance at that last meeting at the end of last month and feel it was unfair and feel that something needs to be done inside the city to allow the citizens to speak about that and give them a chance to do something. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Member Stokoe?
Yes, I was just going to comment on that. I believe at our next council meeting, council will be looking at potentially having any BAA board decisions being able to be appealed through council. So just know that we are working on that.
Any further public comment? Seeing none?
William Ballant, Titusville resident. May I ask you, did you say that this Board of Adjustment and Appeal is going to be involving you folks as well?
Can I answer, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, potentially. So at our last council meeting, we had discussed, so right now, all of our boards are advisory boards except for BAA. So right now, BA decisions made are binding, like they cannot be appealed to council. At the last council meeting, I brought up us potentially seeing that if, in our code, if we could change that to see if BAA decisions could potentially be appealed through city council. So that was a direction that city council made at our last council meeting. And I believe at our next one coming up next week, we are going to be looking at having that. I don't know about the timing of it. That's something that I will be discussing with staff, but we are looking into that.
Would that be relevant for the Apollo Gardens decision?
That's what I do not know, just based on timing, because unfortunately, it can't go back. But we are looking to see about having that in our code.
Because we really feel as citizens, we have a right to speak about it. And we were not given that before with that bogus not standing decision. So I appreciate any help that you can give us.
Yeah, thank you.
That will be on your agenda.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, city attorney, I was talking, I was thinking that gentleman while you spoke. What did you say?
So I advise council, that item will be on your agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no further public comment, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
For adjourn, thank you.